I don't think he's even doing that.
He's explaining something later.
Oh, sir.
Yes.
Yay.
You got it.
And for her. For help.
Uh, he was, um... I've published the, um, uh, the next, uh, my...
I think they sent us over a mail... I'll go check. It's not mine.
It looks solid.
Yeah.
Wow.
All part...
All part...
It's all...
Yeah. So I think it would hard?
Yeah.
Do that. And then there was one that was to process. What's that? Because you have 15 minutes.
Like a proxy or something?
Yeah. Two, two minutes. And thirteen. Later. And a shot. Because you didn't have it for some reason.
Oh. Doing it smaller batches probably.
Yeah, that's what I was doing. And I figured anything for you to ask me. Because stuff, you know, just... I got most of it. And as well, it's really finished. A lot of that's here. Well, between... Pretty good. Jonathan Stewart. Trying to figure out this. And now I think dogs.
Same there.
Sideboard. Well, so everyone's right now. Open. Tell me some of that, isn't it? So, it's just... Just sitting. And... It's all good. So...
I don't like to read from the side.
I know it's...
About to begin?
I need to try one and try the other. I don't know. I need to do something with my best.
Okay, we're ready? Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Marshville Borough Hall for our council meeting. We will call to order the agenda meeting of Marshville Borough Council, September 10th, 2019. If I could please ask you all to remember that tomorrow is the anniversary of the 9/11 attacks at the World Trade Center in New York, the Pentagon in Virginia, and Shanksville, Pennsylvania. So please remember those 2,973 victims and their loved ones during your moment of silence tonight. So please rise for a moment of silence and then our Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I could have a roll call whenever you're ready, Virginia.
Councilman Babbitt?
Here.
Councilman Dwyer?
Here.
Councilman Chronicle?
Here.
Councilman Larissa?
Here.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Councilman Parker?
Here.
Councilman Smith?
Here.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll begin tonight. We don't have any special presentations, so we will go right to public comment. Is there a sign up? Okay, I'm sorry. I should have grabbed it. Thank you very much. We have just one on here. Hossam Jalad. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hossam Jalad, 45 Rejav. Um, I just wanted to start by saying thank you for the work you do. Um, I know it's not easy being on, on that side. Takes a lot. Um, I also wanted to, um, bring attention to the... Probably, you know, you all know the party house issue. And just wanted to, uh, clarify a couple of things. And I wanted to say the one thing also, that the longer that this issue takes, the, the longer that we are affected by this. And I ask you to act quickly and swiftly, as, you know, as possible. Um, also, you know, appreciate a little clarification on, and maybe transparency on, um, there's a confusion about how this is going and where is it going to? As far as like, you know, the, we talked about the, the variance, given this is an R1, and then the short-term rental, kind of just clarifying which one comes first. Do you get the variance first? And then you apply for a permit because it seems to me it's a moot point if, if, if one cannot do a short-term, short-term rental without a variance in the zone, then it doesn't matter whether they have a permit or not. And that being said, this also, uh, does not mean one can go away without, uh, if they have violations as far as like, um, unpermitted structure or, or other, you know, things that you've seen. That's another issue too, that cannot be also... We cannot wait to, to a, a, a short-term rental permit to verify all these other issues as well. Um, just giving all of, you know, all of this and where that falls. And then, um, you know, um, just one quick note. I noticed, um, maybe I'm, I was misreading the calendar outside. It looks like there's, um, uh, the dates are not, uh...
A calendar for what?
Not correct.
Calendar?
The calendar outside for the, for the meetings. I was looking at the billboard outside.
Oh, the meeting dates are wrong?
Yeah, it looks like there's a switch up with...
Oh, we'll, we'll take a look at it. And you told me the kiosk, in the kiosk area? Okay, we'll take a look at that. I'm sorry.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, there is no one else signed up to speak, so we will close public comment at this time. I guess the only thing, uh, we, we try not to say too much. We, you know, we're working on the situation where you're at. It is very taxing, but we, we know what you guys are going through. Just know that we are working on it on our end. And, um, the, the issues that you're talking about will be seen through inspections. They have to get in there. I believe there is one scheduled for this Friday. Hopefully he doesn't try and, um, not do that inspection again. But he, he's gonna have to let us in to see that house at some point. So we're still working on it, and we will continue to working on it till we come to a resolve. We're very aware of a lot of things that are going up there. So I, I thank you for your patience. I really do. I, I went to that meeting along with Justin in Lower Magfield to see their end of it, because it's on both sides. It's a frustrating situation all the way around. It really is. I was amazed myself at it that night. But, uh, but thank you. Thank you for speaking. Okay. You got in your packet this bit? We'll move on to the approval of our, our minutes. Um, everyone got the 8:13? You'll be getting sometime, I believe by Friday, the 8:19 ones. So please look them over. Um, if you find any, uh, thing wrong with them, then make sure you contact the office and let them know for corrections. Treasurer's report, you'll get your finance statement, um, for the month. So make sure you look at that. It's the running budget. So you can see your percentages of where you are with your revenues and your expenditures to this point. It will help when your budget meetings are coming up. Um, and then you also will get your bill list. Make sure you're looking at that. If you see something, um, that you don't understand or discrepancy maybe, um, please make sure that you call the, uh, office and ask those questions if you can. It kind of will help you out ahead of time. Mayor's not here tonight, so I'm sure if he's here on Monday, he will do a report. We don't have a junior person report at this time. Um, I should ask Corinne. Corinne, is there... Did the process started? I think you advertised for a council person, correct?
Yes, and emails have been sent out, but we have not received anybody to, anyone that's interested yet. So if there's any students that would be interested, please reach out.
Oh, okay. I thought I remember seeing it in the Marshville Times. Thank you. Um, okay, on to the action items. Um, a lot of these are standard ones that you guys get every year according to your budget. So, um, you should have received in your packet, the newest report for the MMOs, which is the minimal municipal obligations for our pensions. Um, if you take note of the, um, numbers and what they were for last year, we're actually doing very good with our pensions for this year. So that's, that's a plus for us in the budget. Um, I don't know if anyone has anything they need to ask about it? Okay, and you all got it? Okay. 9B would be, um, the millage payment. That would be for the fire company that's in your budget every year. The amount will be plugged in before, um, we vote on that. I don't think anyone has any questions about that. The next one, 9C, is also for the Capitol Health, our emergency squad. Um, same thing. Um, they get two mills out of our budget, and it's done periodically through the year. So you'll see that number plugged in there for the meeting, uh, for you to consider.
Can I, can I interrupt for a quick second?
Sure.
Um, so Scott, we have the asterisk for contingent upon receipt of, uh, payment in full for gas and diesel invoices. Um, do we have much outstanding there? Or is that just, uh, what you, the way you wrote it up, and it's already taken care of?
No, we just note it that way each time. As you may recall from earlier this year, or last year, I forget when exactly we did it. We've, uh, started doing monthly billing.
Yep.
So that's kept everybody more current than in the past.
And how about financials?
Uh, yes, we get financials from the fire company, uh, early in, early in the year, every year. It's usually like in February or March.
Okay, so we're on target?
Yes.
Good, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
And Capitol Health has theirs on their website, so...
Perfect.
Oh, that's good. Anyone else have any questions about either one of those motions? Okay. 9E, um, this is the motion to authorize the administration enter into the agreement.
9D.
I'm, I'm sorry.
9D.
Oh. How come I don't have 9D on mine? Hold on. Yeah, mine doesn't have it on there. I'm sorry. Okay, 9D is a call for motion to award the annual 2019-2020 consortium salt bid. Um, so the price also is on there for what that is. That's something we do every year. So, um, you guys will be able to vote on that. Make sure I got the next one. Uh, yeah, I'm down to, uh, where mine went. I guess I pulled it off the other paper. Thank you. The 9E is, is of course a motion to authorize the administration enter into the contract with Edmunds Government Tech for the new financial accounting system. Um, they did do a presentation. I believe everyone got it in their packet. Is there anyone who has any other questions they would like to ask Scott about it?
I did. Is that a budgeted item?
Uh, it is not.
And are you proposing that for this year's expenditure?
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, Scott, um, how many people would be trained in this? Um, assuming, um, it were to go through, um, how many people would actually know how to utilize it within...
Uh, it would be, um... We would probably do a portion of the staff in the beginning and then a portion of the staff in a phase two.
Okay. So multiple people? There won't just be like one or two people that are the only ones that know how to utilize it?
Ten.
Okay, that, okay, that's what I'm asking. Okay, thank you.
One more question. Uh, what is the, if I remember correctly, the total for that was around $68,000?
Correct.
Are we financing that, or are we gonna be lump sum?
Uh, that's gonna be lump sum payment.
Okay, thank you.
Can we have that number added into the motion?
Sure.
We could, but we are... It's not a fixed number, I don't believe, because there's a training component to it.
So it'll actually be more than $68,000?
I believe their estimate included was an all-in number, yes.
So the estimate included the training?
The estimate included the training unless we had, need more time for certain staff to get up to speed on the new system and depending on if there's any conversion issues with AMS.
And wasn't that broken down into, um, payments?
Yeah, I thought it was broken down into payments too.
I believe, right?
It wasn't all one lump sum when we talked about it last time.
I thought we talked about it could be in payments.
Yeah, well, that's if we wanted to finance it.
Yeah, that was, that was at 7%. That was given as an option, uh, at the presentation. But you're saying it's gonna be a lump sum?
Yes, right.
Thank you.
And where, where will this lump sum come from?
Uh, the bulk of it will likely come out of, uh, Capitol Reserve Fund.
Okay.
A portion of it will likely be charged against the water fund. I haven't really come up with the allocation mix yet.
So it would not come from the general fund?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And just so everyone knows, that this is also, um, something MMA is also using.
Yes, I believe they've already approved and executed their agreement, so we're...
But that's not related to this one?
With them. I'm sorry?
That's not related to our expenditure though. No, that's a separate thing.
That's their own.
Yes.
Any other questions on that one? Okay. Uh, 9F is a call for motion to authorize the administration to enter into the contract with Tracer for the new infrastructure and asset management and workflow management system. Anyone have any questions on that? They got in their packet?
Again, I would just ask, uh, what the total expenditure is on that. I, I believe that was, uh, there were several components to that. It was broken down monthly, some, some items.
Yeah, and actually the, the invoice for Tracer, we won't even see until after the first of the year. So that'll be a 2020 expenditure.
2020, okay.
But I'm proposing that we pay for it essentially the same way as Edmunds GovTech, so...
Up, upfront?
Yes.
And what would the total be on that?
Uh, again, that, there, there's some variables to that depending on which of, of the options we include and the amount of training involved for the staff, so that could vary. Uh, the estimate was between $7,000 and $12,000.
Okay. Thank you.
And where would that money come from?
Uh, same source. It would be the...
Capital Reserve.
Capital Reserve Fund and possibly a portion from, from water.
So not from the general?
No.
Thank you.
Can we put an amount on these and put it as not to exceed? And just use the largest amount?
Um, you can do anything you want. That would not be my recommendation, because if we have problems associated with the conversion from the AMS software, that takes more time. Or if the staff needs more time than we're estimating for training, we could possibly exceed those numbers. We just don't know yet.
But anything that would exceed what we were originally quoted for would then take an additional vote from us to approve if it's something that's...
That's what I was gonna say.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. So we would know why, why it ran over or...
So it would be not to exceed without, um, additional approval through, from council.
Okay.
That's how I would like to see it written up, is not to exceed X um, without additional approval from council.
Do we have, have that added to the motion? So that it's a, it's a vote from the council to add any more to it? So we know where we, we stand with it as we're moving along in case there's a problem?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, is that everyone else's questions?
Can we set in that, uh, motion where the funding's gonna come from as well?
You can. You can be as detailed in the motion as you would like to be. I, I don't really think it's necessary, but...
I don't...
So you're capping that the council has to approve any other expenditure above what they're asking?
I think he's referring to how the...
What account?
How the cost will be broken down over various funds.
Yeah, I think that's...
It's so people don't get confused that it's, it's coming from Capitol Reserve and the water fund. It's not coming from the general fund, is probably what...
How would, how would that be significant?
Yeah, it would probably just be easier to say that none of the cost is being attributed to the general fund than to give you the whole breakdown that we're not even 100% certain on yet.
What's the significance between the, using the general fund versus the Capitol Reserve uh, with regard to tax dollars?
Because what you can pay through general fund, there are expenses that you can't cover, um, through Capitol Reserve that you can through the general fund. Um, and we would want the public to think that we're using money incorrectly.
So the general fund, you would not be able to pay for these items?
You would if you chose to. But we're not choosing to. Because there's other expenses in the general fund that are more important.
Right.
Okay, so the Capitol Reserve then is typically used for...
For reserve.
Certain things that you're voting to use it, yeah.
So we can use that as, as discretionary?
It's used for capital improvements, which usually have a useful life.
This is an infrastructure...
And be depreciated over time.
Right.
It's not an operating cost.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, but it's still an expense, an expenditure.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it's, it's an expenditure. Like, if you'll recall, I think it was last year, we decided to take the lease payments for the police cars out of the police budget to give the police budget some relief. And we're making the annual lease payments on the police vehicles from the Capitol Reserve Fund for that purpose, so...
Gotcha.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. 9G is, um, uh, I think you guys got the memo on this. Uh, motion to authorize the fraternal order of vehicles, to do their harvest, annual harvest day on Saturday, November 2nd. Um, they have to get the permitting for the temporary closure. It's only for a small area from East Philadelphia Ave to, I think, where their parking lot ends, right there. Um, and that's from 9 to 5. And you should have gotten a memo on that. If you didn't, uh, let the office know.
Everyone did.
Okay. I don't think anyone has any questions on that?
I do. Is there a, a permit process for somebody to apply for this?
No.
Are there any standard directions on how to close the road or to put up signs that it's gonna be closed in advance?
No, but, uh, they're going to make those arrangements through Public Works.
Thanks, John. Um, I guess it's similar to like if you're doing a block party, correct? I mean, when the church did it, they, they got us to approve that block area that they were doing, correct? Is that, that's the idea?
And it's not even gonna be the whole block. Uh, my understanding is it's just the...
Right.
Portion of East Philadelphia Avenue adjacent to their building.
You have a question where the railroad tracks are? Yeah. Okay. Uh, 9H, uh, call for motion to authorize appropriate borough officials to execute the 2019 CDBG agreement for historic summer seat accessibility improvements, phase two. And that was in the amount of $325,000. First thing I'm gonna say to everybody is kudos. Thank you all for supporting this project and our commissioners and HUD that approved that. We got 100% of that grant to finish the other three sides of Patriots Park, the sidewalks curving ADA compliance. And that was a big one. That is a, um, no match from the borough on that. Cost approximately $3,000 for our engineer to draw up that grant to put it in, and you got a $325,000 return on it. That's a heck of a lot of a return, so that was a good project. So, um, thank you all for, um, you know, supporting that project. So we're excited about that. Anyone have any questions besides what I just...
I just wanted to point out, in the grant included is Gilmore's design fees as well.
It is, yes. Yes, it is. Yep. It's, it's broken down in there.
So it was a complete zero cost, uh, to us then?
Outside that $3,000 we put in there, their closing costs are included in that.
Very good.
If you read your paperwork, it's right in there.
Okay, very good.
Uh, 9I is, um, oh, this one here is for the budget meetings. And first I will apologize. Uh, this was changed from what you got in your packet last week, because after I got it, I had spoke to Scott, and I was supposed to get back to him about the dates. And, um, after speaking with Scott, we have, uh, the finance committee meeting on September 26th. Um, so that's the, uh, Chair Mike does that one. And, uh, that's the three committee people, but council also can go to that. It's a public meeting. Um, they're gonna do like they normally would do and hold a committee meeting. They'll have the, um, information from our finance statement, like we always do, and they can go over it. Um, bring your finance statement if you'd like to ask questions about that point. Um, but that's what that meeting's about. The regular budget meetings for the proposed budget will be given to everyone in the beginning of November. Our meetings, we're gonna hold them on November 7th and 8th. We figured we'll give you guys enough time to do that. I, I, when I spoke to Scott, we really don't wanna vote the proposed budget without having the meetings first, like we always had. That was the thing that happened last year. So we're gonna allow the council to get the proposal, sit down and have our discussions for two days about it, um, and then make whatever recommendations or look at the budget altogether at that time. You have a week after that, we have our agenda meetings. That's another night. If there's anything you missed talking about or you wanted to bring up, that's another chance to do that. That's a work session meeting. And then the actual, um, proposed budget would be voted on, on November 18th before Thanksgiving. You then have four weeks before it is approved for the final one. So it's a total of six weeks' time of working on, on the budget. It gives Scott a little more time to get the closer, the numbers closer for your expenditures and your, um, revenue coming in by the time you get there. So that's why you see those dates on there on this, um, agenda. So if anyone has a problem with those dates, please let me know. We'll probably advertise. I think we used to do it around 7:00. It, it could be good if we could do it a little bit earlier, but it's up to you guys. I don't know your work schedules, because we're usually here for a few hours doing that. So, um, just let me know what is best for you guys. You wanted it 7:00? Do you want it a little bit earlier on those dates?
6:30.
Can everyone be here by 6:00? 6:30 to give us more time?
Suggestion.
Not doing anything.
Okay.
Ted's coming the furthest from his job.
Ted, are you okay around that time, if we give you that much warning, or...
I, I mean, I can make arrangements to be real, but my job goes, depending on the system.
Mm-hmm. Would it be better for you towards 7:00? Is that...
6:30 is fine. I'll...
6:30, okay. Okay, well, how about if we do that, Scott? We'll shoot for 6:30 for the advertisement? And then, is it, are you okay with that? Yeah, is that good?
Now, with the rough draft, uh, when will we be getting a copy of that?
In the beginning of November.
Beginning of November.
Beginning before we have the meeting.
Okay.
And, and when I look back, I actually went back and looked at all of our, uh, budget meetings and our budgets from 2010. We've never gotten our proposed budget before November. And actually, we're getting it earlier in the beginning of November, because normally you would get it around the third week or after Thanksgiving.
Okay.
We want it voted on before the holiday, before Thanksgiving.
Now, a question for Mike, um, for the finance committee meeting. Are you gonna be discussing this budget?
We're gonna be going over the current year and where, where we're looking good and where we're looking bad.
Okay. Can I request that that meeting be videotaped?
I mean, you could request it. I don't know if Scott has the, the ability to have somebody here for it.
Since it's gonna be budget-related, um, it's gonna touch on budget. I'd like to have that just for public, uh, transparency.
That's up to Scott.
Well, actually, it's up to council. Council made the policy decision last year that only the agenda meeting, the regular meeting, and zoning hearing board meetings would be televised. So if council wants to deviate from that practice, you would have to make the decision for us to do that.
Well, if you're gonna...
But if somebody can bring a video camera... But if somebody can bring a video camera and report it, I mean, you don't need us to do that part.
It's a public meeting.
And, and that's kind of where I was getting at, was because it would have to be an employee coming in and that would be up to you if you were gonna send an employee in.
It's a work session meeting. Anyone can film it if they want to, record it if they want to. It's entirely up to you. It's strictly a work session.
For the sake of transparency, it's gonna have budget discussion. It would be nice to have it on the, on the website.
It's a public meeting. Everybody can come here. They can fill the room if they want to. That's as transparent as you're gonna get.
Well, no, it's not as transparent as you're gonna get because people don't have time to come here in person. That's why I'm asking that it be videotaped, Madam President.
Yeah, have somebody come videotape it.
So just for clarification, we're not going to be receiving a copy of a budget in September?
Oh, no.
I've been asking for the last four or five council meetings, and I've been told that we were going to be getting a copy of a budget in September. And now we're being told we're going to be getting one in the second week of November?
First week in November. Our meetings are gonna be the 7th and the 8th.
Right.
So in the beginning of.
So why is that?
Because we've always done it in November. And it gives Scott a little more time to get the budget numbers closer than just the projected ones you have right now.
But again, I've been asking for the last four or five council meetings when we were going to be receiving a budget, and I was told September. And also, the, the draft agenda that we received said that the first meeting, the first budget meeting was going to be October 21st. Now it's moved to the middle of November.
That's because I didn't talk to Scott first when I called.
I don't understand why you have to talk to Scott. I don't understand.
She's the council president.
And I asked him when it would be best to work that out.
So you have to move it an entire month? It's always better to have the.
It's always been in November.
Right. But again, since the beginning of, since the middle of the year, I've been asking when we were going to receive a budget, and I kept being told September.
And I said, September, we're having the finance meeting, which are on the 26th. So if you bring your finance statement, that is your budget and your percentages at that point. That's what we've always done. We've always either had it in September or October, your finance meeting.
Right. But again, I was told September, and we have two full-time employees that are working on the budget now. So I don't know why we can't have a budget in September, which again, is what I was told.
Wouldn't you rather have the numbers closer to what the revenues and expenditures are gonna be by November? Wouldn't that be better to do that?
No, they, they want pie in the sky that they can send to the public to make it look like we're doing something we shouldn't be because we don't have all the data yet. That's what they want.
No, I just, again, if it was, we were going to be receiving a copy of the budget in November, I don't know why I wasn't told September. That's a full two months. And with everything that happened at the end of last year, I would have thought that, again, we would stick with that, that timeline of September.
We have six weeks to work on the budget from the time we give the proposed budget. That's six weeks' time. I think that's plenty of time to work on the numbers and adjust them or whatever you, council needs to do at that time.
Previous years, we didn't get it till December.
Yeah.
Well, again, we have two full-time employees that are working on the budget. And again, that was one of the things that we were told way back last year, that we were going to be getting a budget way earlier. Now, all of a sudden, we're relying on.
And then we threw in the wrinkle of a DCED audit.
Yeah, that too.
So there's more going on that we didn't intend to have going on when that was first stated.
So there's, that's the reason that we're not getting a budget in September? It's not, doesn't have anything to do with numbers? It's to do with that?
Did you ever get a budget, a proposed budget in September? You've been on council how long? Did you ever get one in September? I never did.
Well, again, we now have two full-time employees that are working on the budget.
What's that got to do with it?
And we were told that we were going to be receiving a copy of the budget in September.
All right, I'm not gonna argue about this anymore. This is the dates that the administration has set up. Can you make those dates?
No, they're not.
That's when we're getting the budget.
The administration said October.
Anyone else? Is no unfinished business, no new business? Borough officials, anyone have anything else to say?
I'd just like to make a comment about the House on 874 Pennsylvania Avenue. After, after attending the, the hearing meeting in Lower Mayfield, both Debbie and I talked with their code official and their solicitor. And one of the statements made last month by the public was, you know, Lower Mayfield's on top of this. They took care of it in two months. They got very lucky in that they were able to inspect that house because their code official went there to post something on the door. And one of the residents was actually outside and allowed them to come in. It wasn't because they did a random inspection. It was because they came in and the, the code enforcement guy asked if he could enter the house and inspect. And the tenant that was there walked him in. The guy, the code enforcer basically said the same thing ours does. He doesn't have the power to go knocking the door, kick the door in and walk in and inspect. He got lucky by fluke that this tenant was outside and allowed him in. So that's why our code enforcement can't just go to 874 knocking the door and say, let me in now. I need to see it. The inspection has to be scheduled as part of our short-term lodging ordinance. So I just wanted to make that comment because they, he even said, we, we got lucky.
Yeah, he said, they'll, they'll never let him in again, he's sure. But what was good about it was he did find out a lot of things when he got in on that accidental getting in the building, which gave an insight.
Yeah, I reached, I reached out to the solicitor up there too. Does our short-term rental ordinance have any more or less teeth in comparison to Lower Mayfield? Maybe our solicitor in comparing the two?
It was matched from that, right?
It's actually very similar to the Lower Mayfield because our office was sort of in on the drafting on that too. So there's a couple of things that represent minor tweaks based on sort of their experience with, you know, their own, which is enacted earlier. But it's, it's very, very similar in operation.
Also, which would take precedence, the, the zoning of that particular area or the ordinance that we have that certain activities, you know?
The ordinance regulates the conditions under which people can get a license, certain record-keeping, a number of other matters. You know, however, without giving away the plot.
Right, right. If you can answer that, that's fine. I understand.
Basically, that, you know, you have zoning districts. No matter where a proposed short-term rental is going to be, it's either going to be allowed by right in that zoning district or it's not. If it's not, then a variance would need to be obtained before a license could be issued.
Understood. Thank you.
I also wanted to point out too, their solicitor did say after the hearing that videos are better than pictures. So for any of the residents that are next door or nearby that see issues, if you can video them and provide them to the borough, it helps a lot more with the case than pictures or word of mouth.
Can I, my question?
Sure.
Mike, hold on. I don't know if it's the resident's job to monitor. You know, we can do this. We can observe so much, but the fact that it's now my job to go and videotape, that puts us at risk of any retaliation. We don't know what this person's capable of. It puts us in danger because of the zoning. Code enforcement is unable to do their job. Now it's becoming our job and the police department too. I think really what we, this is gonna take just more of, I mean, we, we supplied letters. We supplied what we, you know, what we have, what we can do. But it's, at a certain point, the other side have to take some responsibility. And as far as, you know, the code official and, you know, having to go to the other, the other house, and yes, it was a, a coincidence. But how many, you know, like I personally saw the Morrisville at that, not that, you know, day, but like later on, the Morrisville, I think they have their car with a logo that just went by, didn't even bother going near the house. So I don't know if it was just, if that's what they call their, oh, I went there and no one was there. I mean, I don't know who's.
That's probably Public Works because the code enforcement doesn't have anything on the side of the vehicle, I don't believe.
I don't, I'm just, that's the thing. Like we, you know, we used to have, what was his name? The code guy?
Posture?
The one, everyone was worried from seeing his car, you know? And we don't have that anymore. And I think that's part of the problem.
True we do. You just don't see it.
Well, that's a problem. You need to see it.
Why do you need to see it if he's driving around doing his job?
No, I'm just saying, like, the fact that you don't have that, I think is part of the issue, is, is, you know, having somebody that can just, you know, drive by and then see a violation, have to do something about it. I mean, you know, we're so quick to send letter and to enforce, like, you know, a sidewalk that's being raised, whatever, half inch. But, you know, you have the big problems that we're not really dealing with. I mean, this is, this is a big problem. And, you know, we do need, you know, code, code enforcement to, to really step it up. And by a range, I mean, you just show up, the other, the other, you know, Lower Mayfield, they showed up. Still showed up.
They showed up because they were called, just like our people do.
By saying, oh, can we come in? I mean, you know, good luck.
Well, we have, we have a scheduled inspection with it. We'll hopefully get in there. So all I can tell you is we gotta keep doing what we're doing on our end. And I'm not gonna say anything more about that or what we're doing on our end, but we're doing what we can on our end legally, what we can on our end.
I understand. I'm just, just to, to add one more quick comment on, you know, how we were doing the business development and we had, you know, people coming up with ideas and plans and to bring in people to live in Morrisville. But, you know, also think about the people that are already in Morrisville and how to keep them stay in Morrisville.
Agreed.
I mean, that's, that's, you know, something to think about. You know, like, we're all thinking like this is this, you know, really taxes are high, schools are not, you know, underperforming. And, you know, on top of this is, we have to deal with, the fact that a whole year, we've been dealing with this. And it's, just has to be quicker. We have to move quickly.
We're trying. Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other announcements from borough?
I have a, are we under borough officials?
Yes.
Just wanted to give an update on the Red Bridge. I'm gonna try to get the wood into a kiln. It doesn't seem to be drying quite as quickly as I had hoped. So I will update everyone next month. I had intended on doing the project at the end of November. And I will give a definite update next month as to what direction that's going. I also just want to make a quick comment. I noticed we have a lot of streets and crosswalks that have been lined. They all look very good. And I want to thank our Public Works for that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, let me ask you about the Red Bridge. At what point, if the wood doesn't?
Pull your microphone down. I can't hear you too well.
Oh, sorry. At what, if the wood doesn't dry fast enough, at what date would you have to stop and then start again, you know, before it gets too cold?
Well, if, if it's not, if I can't get it dried, either through kiln or through natural processes, by the end of October, it would have to be postponed until the following year.
Okay.
So my, my intention at this point is just to try to get into a kiln. That way, because that.
Burn it?
Huh?
That won't burn it?
No, that actually, that's how they dry wood. So that would get it done a lot faster and expedite the whole process. Right now, I have it up at the Firehouse Garage. I have a dehumidifier and a fan blowing on it 24/7. And it's still not drying. Some of the, some of the wood is over three inches thick. So it's quite a, quite a process.
Oh, my goodness.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, if there's no one else, then I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Second?
Tag it.
Okay. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, we are ended at 7:38.
I said an hour.
38 minutes.